All right, welcome. Again, today we're going to go over a case study. So I'm going to share my screen and we're going to start with some case studies here. We'll start off with this one. This will be our first one. Let me switch my screens. Got one on screen going on that I would like to switch. All right, so this book right here is the one that I've been using. It is called 101 Primary Care Case Studies. Actually, go ahead and link that for you. All right, so it's got 101 case studies in it that are for the primary care setting. And I've used several different case study books over the years. And this one is set up so well because of the online feature. In the actual physical textbook that you get, there is a bunch of blanks. So it's a workbook and so you're able to work through the whole book, kind of get your thoughts out. And then you can come online and check and see what the answers were. And a lot of the case study books I've seen don't have a really great answer key. But this answer key is very thoughtful and very well-written. And I love some of the aspects of it. So it's just been my favorite. All right, so let me go ahead, make sure my share is right because I don't think it's proper anymore. Okay, give me a thumbs up or an okay in the chat, please, to let me know that you are seeing Case 2: Fatigue and Weakness for the Adult Female. Go ahead and let me know yes in the chat if you're seeing it. Awesome, thank you, Alex. All right, so let's start with this patient. So they come in with their chief complaint fatigue and weakness. And let me tell you, that is a very common complaint to get. And when you hear fatigue and weakness alone, you start off with, oh no, this is going to be a huge panel of labs and tests, but we have to be an excellent historian. And that is going to help drive which diagnostics and tests that we actually end up ordering for a patient. And as soon as you hear fatigue and weakness, you're thinking, oh, lots of different things. Let's start up with her HPI so we can start to whittle down to what weakness is going to be. So we've got a 52-year-old Caucasian woman who presents to her primary care provider with complaints of increasing fatigue and weakness over the past three to four months. She is an avid runner and finds it difficult to keep her usual distance or pace. She tried adding a multivitamin and has been tracking her sleep on an exercise-tracking watch for the past month without significant findings. She does report having some irregularity with her menses over the past year, but her routine gynecologic exam showed no significant concerns and she denies excessive or heavy bleeding. Her gynecologist reportedly told her she is likely in perimenopause. After confirming she is not pregnant with an in-office urine ACG and has a follow-up appointment scheduled in about six weeks. The patient denies any anxiety or depression and reports good social activity. Her diet is vegetarian and reported as well-balanced. So go ahead and start thinking in your head. Okay, I've got all these things going on. What if this might be causing my fatigue and weakness? Start thinking about it, start spitballing that. Put it in the chat, what are you thinking when you start thinking of a 52-year-old with fatigue and weakness? What if her history so far is sending off any kind of alarm bells for you? All right, so let's look at her review of systems. The patient's review of systems is positive for asthenia without anorexia or weight loss and positive for angular kelosis and increased soreness of tongue and mouth at times. She does note some mild hair loss and brittle nails. Her review of system is also positive for some dyspnea on exertion and exercise intolerance, and she has some constipation. She denies chest pain or palpitations. The review of systems is also negative for abdominal pain, nausea, vomiting, or diarrhea. She denies blood in her stools, no hematuria or dysuria. She also denies dizziness, blurred vision, headache, anxiety, or depression, as well as fever, chills, night sweats, and has no significant changes in her weight or unusual bruising noted. Okay, so that's some more things. She's got a lot of systems affected by whatever's going on with her. We're looking at some dyspnea, exercise intolerance, constipation. So we're looking at respiratory, some general issues there, constipation, GI. So whatever's going on, it's got a lot of effects. The patient's history is unremarkable. Her menses are irregular, less frequent for the past nine months with her last menstrual period about eight weeks ago without excessive or heavy bleeding. Her surgical history is significant for one C-section at age 28 and an appendectomy at age 35. The patient is married and lives at home with her spouse and youngest child. She is employed as an accountant full-time with a graduate school education. She denies smoking or illicit drug use. She drinks socially, reporting about four or five glasses of wine per week. Her family history includes her mother, aged 76, with hypertension, and her father, aged 77, with hyperlipidemia, hypertension, and gout. She's allergic to fluoroquinolones with a rash but no known food allergies. She's taking a women's multivitamin and occasional ibuprofen for pain. All right, so that is our, so far, this is everything that a patient has told us. So this is all of our subjective data. This is everything she's telling us about herself. So let's go into our objective data where we're going to go in and assess this patient, paying special attention to anything in her review of systems that came up as positive. So we're going to look at all these things that she has mentioned that she is experiencing, investigate and see if we can find anything physical. And then after that, we'll start with ordering our diagnostics and labs to start whittling this down. Vitals are 96.8, pulse is 62. 62 is not unusual for a runner to have a lower heart rate. Respiratory rate 14, blood pressure 112 over 62. Height 67 inches, so she's about 5'7", weighing 126, which means her BMI is going to be 19, which is not underweight, but very, but very close to the lower limits of normal. So she has a thin habitus. General alert and oriented times three, well-groomed, psychiatric, normal affect, pleasant and cooperative. Skin, hair, and nails. Her skin is dry, no rashes or lesions. She has a normal hair distribution but brittle nails. In her eyes, we notice that she's got mild pallor of the conjunctiva. Mild pallor of the conjunctiva. Evidence of healing angular kelosis bilaterally, so that cracks right here with some smoothness and redness of the tongue, smooth tongue. Mucus membranes with some mild pallor. Her neck is supple without thyromegaly, so we palpated the thyroid. We don't feel any thyromegaly, which is again, when we think about fatigue and weakness, we want to check out that thyroid. Head and neck lymph nodes within normal limits. Her lungs are clear to auscultation with normal respiratory effort. Her heart has sinus S1, S2, regular rate and rhythm, no murmur is noted. So we've listened to heart and lungs. Remember, she has that dyspnea. We need to look at her heart and lungs. Abdomen is soft, non-tender, no distension, no arganomegaly. She has positive and normal bowel sounds in all quadrants. Again, we wanted to pay special attention to the abdomen due to this patient's constipation. Genital erect will note external hemorrhoids. We would want to check for hemorrhoids because the patient is attesting to constipation. And constipation typically causes hemorrhoids at some point. If there's a lot of excessive straining, we also want to think about fissures, ask about bleeding, wiping, things like this. Negative for occult blood. Genital exam is deferred at this time. She recently had a gynecologic exam. Neurologic, let's see, nerves 2 through 12 are grossly intact with normal patellar deep tendon reflexes. All right, so I'm actually going to pause here for just a second and see if people can start typing in what their differential diagnoses are. These can be anything. It's anything that it could possibly be. It doesn't always have to match everything, but it's things that you want to think about. What are my differential diagnoses so that I can decide which labs and diagnostics I need to get? So I can pick, okay, it's definitely this one, not this one, maybe this one, and kind of work from there to get our more confirmed diagnosis, right? So I'm actually going to pause again for just a minute. For those of you who are just joining, I'm actually going to scroll up so you can see this patient's HPI and review of systems so you can possibly start thinking about some differentials. Good, Alex says anemia or hyperthyroidism. I could see both of those. The anemia kind of reflects some of the symptoms. The body habitus could reflect hyperthyroidism. You know, sometimes you could think, oh, they're just a rudder, they're thin. But we would, you know, hyperthyroidism is a possibility. She's not remarkably tachycardic though, it is 62. Anyone else have a couple of differentials they want to throw out there? All right, let's look at their list. What are their differentials that they have picked? So they're going to go kind of broad. They'll go wide and pick a bunch of different stuff and then we'll kind of pick one. So we could consider a macrocytic anemia. Because she is a vegetarian, it has some routine alcohol intake. We would want to consider a macrocytic anemia. She's got fatigue and weakness, a specialized diet, she's vegetarian, and a moderate or a routine alcohol intake. Macrocytic anemias present similarly to other anemias with the signs of fatigue, weakness, pallor. Sometimes they also have irregular heartbeat, shortness of breath, dizziness, lightheadedness, chest pain, cold hands and feet, and headaches. In early anemia, patients often do not report any symptoms. So reporting of more than one of these symptoms usually indicates the presence of an anemia for some time. Again, early anemias, the body will compensate for it. They'll do other things to try to help mitigate the effects. So early anemias typically are asymptomatic. So you might find anemias on routine CBCs that the patient's not yet complaining if anything. If they have complaints, you're going to find a more remarkable change on their lab work. Differentiation comes first from history and more significantly with lab studies. Again, we could have macro or micro. So let's talk about micro. Micro is pretty high on the differential list. There is no evidence of acute or insidious blood loss. That's why they did, up here on her labs, they mentioned this. Negative for occult blood. They probably did an FOB-T or some similar study and did not find any blood there. Her periods aren't very common, they're not heavy. That was another important question was to rule out, is there a blood loss from something? Or is it a dietary issue that could be leading to this anemia? But the patient's physical exam findings are consistent with a microcytic anemia secondary to iron deficiency. What are two or three symptoms specifically mentioned that make you immediately think iron deficiency or a microcytic anemia? She did have, again, those vague symptoms of fatigue, weakness, and pallor that are seen with both macrocytic and microcytic anemias. But there was a couple of symptoms that were very specific to iron deficiency anemia. Did you pick up on those? If so, put those in the comments while we're going through the rest of these. Hypothyroidism is a reasonable diagnosis to consider. The patient is having fatigue, weakness, and exercise intolerance. The findings of dryness of hair, skin, and nails may lend to support this diagnosis as well. The patient does have absence of weight gain, but that can definitely be seen in a patient who is, you know, very healthy, regularly exercising. So don't be thrown if your patient with hypothyroidism doesn't have the weight gain if they have a good diet and exercise. They could still be having fatigue and the changes to the hair, skin, and nails. So hyperthyroidism should be considered here and tests should be ordered. Sleep apnea is a reasonable diagnosis anytime someone presents with fatigue, weakness, and exercise intolerance. She used an exercise tracker for sleep, but that is not an accurate way to rule that out. So you wouldn't say, oh, your Fitbit said you're sleeping. Fine, you're not waking up. Okay, we'll just rule it out because your Fitbit said so. These patients will spend so much money on these little machines to think and think that it's going to be helpful. But we don't diagnose or rule out dysrhythmias, hypertension problems, sleep apnea. We don't rule any of that out based off of somebody's Fitbit watch or things like that. I've sat in office with these devices and showed patients comparing them to my oximeter, comparing them to a blood pressure cuff to show that they are not as accurate as we would like for them to be. I am sure that technology will advance and who knows how many years away. We will be able to use these devices. We absolutely still need to corroborate those findings with our own medical equipment. But it has been helpful for me to show patients in office that your Fitbit's not matching what I'm actually feeling as well as your pulse. I even have a couple of people whose product claims to be able to track their blood pressure. I'm not really sure how that works. But I know that even the wrist blood pressure cuffs are still kind of questionable as far as accuracy. And so being able to show the client in office that their watch doesn't match my blood pressure cuff can help them to not use that at home and teach them to use the proper tracking equipment. So again, kind of a tangent, but the use of an exercise tracker for sleep is not always accurate, okay? So in the absence of any other evidence on early testing, this would be a reasonable thing to consider later on. So if we go through the first couple, because we like to start with our least invasive, most likely diagnosis and then work towards our other ones. But it is always helpful to list all your differential diagnoses when you're charting under your assessment section on your SOAP to help you remember, what was my next step? Okay, I ruled out the first three things, what's left? Nutritional deficiency is less likely diagnosis, but it's important to consider in a patient presenting with vague reports of fatigue, particularly in someone with a specialized diet. We want to consider vitamin D deficiency because she's perimenopausal, she's Caucasian. This, that's where we find vitamin D deficiencies. And we also might want to consider to see if she's protein deficient. There are lots of vegetarian and vegan sources of protein, but we could consider that down the road as well. So of these five, what is your most likely diagnosis? What are you thinking is most likely of these five? Any thoughts there? All right, let's look at this. Yeah, Alex, yeah, anemia. So microcytic anemia. The patient is a vegetarian who only recently added a multivitamin after she felt symptoms, right? If we already feel symptoms, we already have a pretty progressed illness. Her physical examinations show things that are, to me, are very specific to iron deficiency anemia, the angular kelosis and the slightly glossy tongue. Those are key in diagnosing IDA. She's got pallor of her mucous membranes. She had the conjunctiva had pallor, brittle nails. Additional questions we might ask about food cravings to see if she has any symptoms of pica. So what kind of lab tests should we order for this patient? We need to order a CBC, a CMP, a TSH, a UA, vitamin D, vitamin B12, and an iron panel. That's what we would order. And this is kind of common when you have someone female especially presenting with fatigue. You cast a broad net and see what comes back. You have a pretty decent idea at this point with this patient based off of her history and presentation of which of these are going to be altered. But we do cast a wide net with our labs and get all of these at one time. For our CBC, we've got white blood cells 8.6, hemoglobin is 9.7, so that's concerning finding. Hematocrit is 35, MCV, so that's for your B for volume, is 72. MCH, H for color, is 25, MCHC is 27, and RDW is 15.7. That's one thing that you want to focus in on as far as things for, in the clinic setting and for your boards, is to really master what these different, what these different lab values mean for MCV, MCH, MCHC, remembering what your normal for your hemoglobin and hematocrit are. Look at that CMP, it's normal. TSH looks good, UA looks good, vitamin D, B12, serum iron as well, serum ferritin, and the TIBC. So we've got our full iron panel here as well. And once you have changes in that TIBC, you're looking at, you know, some pretty, some pretty significant alterations. So let's look at her next steps for her management. We also want to do a diary while we're waiting for our labs to come back to look at her symptoms, her food, exercise, sleep patterns, and bowel habits. We want to educate the patient on iron deficiency anemia, good food sources of iron, and preventing nutritional deficiencies. So now we're going to move into what I think is one of my favorite sections about this book. It's a narrative that the provider who saw this patient will actually provide. So at her follow-up visit, the patient presented with a lifestyle diary that reflected a healthy vegetarian diet in general with a notable absence of iron-rich foods. Activity levels and sleep patterns were normal. She did report some slight improvements with constipation with the prescription of polythylene glycol and increased hydration. She doesn't want to do this too often and she was counseled on overuse of laxatives. Lab testing reviewed with the patient did indicate a microcytic anemia secondary to iron deficiency anemia. While her remaining labs were essentially normal, she was also counseled to increase her vitamin D intake given the low normal value and her risk for osteoporosis. Those at risk for osteoporosis again are those post-perior post-menopausal Asian or Caucasian females in their early 50s. We want to really make sure that they're increasing their vitamin D. The patient was asked to meet a clinical dietitian following our discussion to assist in finding dietary sources of iron in her vegetarian diet. We reassure her the ease of management with use of a supplement and improved dietary intake. They prescribed 325 mg of ferrous sulfate. You can prescribe this, but you just have them buy it over the counter. It's very affordable, there is no brand preference, it's the cheap one. You know, they just get it over the counter. It's very easily absorbed. And it is best to be taken with a vitamin C tablet or orange juice. We do recommend that we don't take it with food. Some patients will have GI upset and will end up needing to take it with food, but we start them off with not taking it with food. It also can cause constipation, which notably this patient is already dealing with. So we want to make sure that, we again counsel about the use of hydration. Exercise is very important. We need three things for good poops. You need fiber, fluid, and a functioning bowel. And that fiber will come from, we might, we have increased her fiber, psyllium seed, amucil, something in smoothies, flaxseed. Have her to increase her fiber as well as the fluid and hydration. Make sure she's drinking a lot of water. See how many coffee beverages or caffeinated beverages she's drinking per day. And that functioning bowel, it's got a couple of different things that will affect that. So you can either have physiologic problems. Maybe she's got a slow stomach or maybe she's not exercising, but clearly she is. That functioning bowel will be affected by patient's movement themselves as well as the GI's own movement. So there's two things that affect the function, okay? She was recommended to use NSAIDs to a minimum and suggested some topical pain relievers. You can use things like Bengay, Capstacin. The topical NSAIDs actually have the same risks as binet NSAIDs, so that's not a trade-off there. They also discuss risks associated with poor compliance and persistence of anemia. Because right now she's not tachycardic, but eventually the body says, oh, I don't have enough red blood cells to carry around oxygen, so I'm just going to cycle the red blood cells that I do have around much faster. And so you get tachycardic, you can get a murmur, you can get heart failure from long-term untreated IDA. Although it was less likely that her anemia was related to her menses, I did ask that she keep her schedule follow-up with her gynecologist to discuss this further. Her labs were forwarded to the gynecologist as well. They repeated the CBC and iron studies within two to four weeks, and that is typical. So you start that, you start that iron. You check them again in two to four weeks, you're not going to see a complete resolution of this. You have to take like iron for six months to replace the stored iron that you have in your blood. And that's your ferritin, because I say 10, you've stored your iron in a tin. So ferritin is your stored form of iron. It takes about six months to fix that problem. But within two to four weeks, we should see some changes in her CBC itself. Let's see, because at least we're replacing the serum iron, that will be resolved. So she'll be able to use the iron that's there, but it'll take a long time to get her stores back up. She received the information well, verbalized understanding of the plan and seemed comfortable with this. Had she shown any science if you're concerned, I would have provided her with some easy-to-read research about how common and treatable IDA is with evidence that her care plan follows common standards of practice. I would also ensure her she has her appointment with a dietitian next week to be sure she is supported and reassured and can begin her modifications quickly. At her eight-week follow-up appointment, her CBC and iron studies returned to normal limits and her gynecology appointment was reported as otherwise unremarkable. She is confirmed to be in perimenopause based on labs done by GYN. She is tolerating her iron sulfate, ferrous sulfate well when taken with food. So she did end up having to take hers with food. Again, something's better than nothing. She will be able to replace her stores, but it will take some time. Laboratories, lab studies will be repeated again in three months and then after that, maybe one more check on those following her symptoms as well. This particular case was very straightforward with expected outcomes occurring throughout the evaluation process. However, anemia can be tricky to evaluate, especially in the earlier asymptomatic phases. I've had patients, both men and women, who presented without symptoms who were found to have critical hemoglobin levels on routine testing. The most memorable patient having a hemoglobin of 6.7 without a single complaint. In any case, it is important to find the cause of anemia and consider repeating the CBC if results are not consistent with the H and P. An inappropriate tourniquet technique if it's too tight on the blood draw or inappropriate result entries that the lab assistant typed in things incorrectly can cause unnecessary interventions due to inaccurate results. Prior to requesting blood transfusions for my outpatient, I always repeat the CBC with differential in addition to blood typing. And this is, this should be and is routine standard practice. If you're going to give your patient blood, you're sending him over to the infusion center, you need to have that CBC repeated for that patient when you're doing your cross-typing and blood typing to make sure that it's actually as low as you think it is. I'll say this, during one of my pregnancies, I had a finger stick hemoglobin that showed like a 9.8 or something like this. I went to get my actual blood drawn and it was 11. So that's an example of, you know, maybe it's, it could have been anything because those labs were taken within three days of each other. I didn't magically raise my hemoglobin by two points. So confirming and corroborating with two different lab values is important. In my career so far, I've had two patients for whom I was about to order blood transfusion but repeated the CBC to confirm the deficiency first. And both times, the CBC studies were normal. So those two patients then were not given, you know, transfusions. One of the most important aspects to my, to care of my patients is a thorough culturally sensitive and nonjudgmental history-taking. I take the majority of my patient visit time to talk with them about their lifestyle. Even the little nuances you may not think are important may be very relevant to your case. History and physical, your history is so important. If you just listen to your patients, they will tell you what's going on if you, if you just kind of let them go. You do have to guide the narrative at times and redirect and ask pointed questions. It's amazing what you can find out what's going on with your patient. It's my job, okay, so next. In this case, she is a healthy woman who takes pride in her vegetarian lifestyle. There's something wrong with her vegetarian lifestyle, but we don't want to, we want to show in love how to fix that rather than show any judgment. So we respect that and find ways to help her with her lifestyle modifications that suit her wants and needs, not judge her for her restrictions or be like, you have to start eating meat today or you're gonna just, you know, ruin your body. You don't want to be that way. This person wants to follow a vegetarian lifestyle, fine. We can do that and get your labs normal. As soon as you find out your patient's got any type, I mean, everyone's diet's deficient in something. Assessing diet, oh, food is medicine. You just have to assess that diet. Always do a 24-hour food recall. Always ask questions about what they're eating on a regular basis. Standard American diet is super deficient in tons of micro and macronutrients. Vegetarian lifestyle leads to things like B12 deficiencies and protein deficiencies and iron deficiency. So you have to find what's going on, find ways that fit those healthy lifestyles and supplement them. There is plenty of ways to follow those diets and get what you need. I also want to be sure I'm not noting any eating habits that may reflect unhealthy choices or a psychological disorder. Referring her to the dietitian provides her with a well-trained source of information and support while showing her I'm committed to her long-term health. All right, so that was this patient. Again, just love this book. If you just came in, you might not see previous chat messages, so I'm going to tag it again. This is his book. I've actually met with this guy before who wrote it. We had a lovely meeting talking about this book. And I'm hopefully going to be able to collaborate a little bit on the next one. At least maybe contribute one case study or just I kind of gave him some feedback. I've gotten some student feedback on, you know, more things we want to see in the book. I'll be happy to do another one if you want to stick around. I love doing these, they're so fun. Learned so much from them. I'll even learn something new because sometimes there'll be a funny little differential diagnosis I've never seen before and I get to learn more about that and that's fantastic. So I'm going to close out this one. Let's get a sweet little confused old lady straightened out. Let's see what we can do for her. So her chief complaint is confusion. This is an 80-year-old woman with mild Parkinson's disease, severe generalized anxiety disorder, gastroesophageal reflux disease, and chronic urinary retention with recurrent UTIs. She's brought into her PCP's office because of malconfusion over the past two days. The daughter has observed her compulsively taking her temperature and wandering around the house repeatedly stating, am I septic? The patient, who is typically sharp and lucid, called her PCP two weeks ago complaining of urinary urgency and incontinence, but refused an office visit or urine test because she was too busy with other appointments. Considering her history and upon review of her most recent urine culture and sensitivity testing performed two months prior, a prescription for nitrofurantoin macrobide was called into her pharmacy. She was given ED precautions and was advised to schedule a follow-up appointment in one week. Today, the patient states she did not come back because her urinary symptoms had improved. She admits feeling worse overall endorsing nausea, anorexia, weight loss, diffuse body aches, chills, and night sweats, which she attributes to her new medication for the Parkinson's disease, which she started six months ago. She denies dysuria, hematuria, fever, or flank pain, but notes she never has dysuria with her UTIs. I just shiver when I get the enterococcus. That's how I know it's not the E. coli. She asked repeatedly, do I have sepsis? Because home temperature always runs 96.8, which is too low according to her internet research. She has not returned to her urologist in over a year. He just wants to give me another pill, I won't take it. So wow, we're only two paragraphs in with this patient and we are all over the place. And this happens. You'll have patients who are, you know, just giving you this narrative. You can't really get rein back in when you're trying to give those pointed questions or guide the conversation. The patient's daughter, who works two jobs and is not home much, states that the patient is not compliant with prescribed medications, even with a pillbox. The patient carefully reads all pharmacy package inserts, gets scared by the list of side effects, and then searches the internet to see how dangerous the medication is before deciding whether she will take it or not. The patient admits she cuts most of her pills in half or takes less than the prescribed dose because she is allergic to everything. The patient states she only took the macrobide pill once a day instead of twice a day and for only four days of the seven days prescribed. I hate that pill, I get so nauseated. She doesn't trust prescription medications in general. I read the internet, I know about pharma. I want natural antibiotics, D-mannose, and cranberry. Some of those things work, but only for prevention, not treatment. So review of systems. The patient's review of system is positive for chills, weight loss, fatigue, constipation, rectal white bleeding and rectal discomfort when hemorrhoids swell, insomnia, depression, and anxiety. She is positive for vaginal itching and pain, chronic without discharge or bleeding. Is positive for skin itching all over, but no rash. Her view of systems is negative for fever. She has no cough, shortness of breath, dyspnea on exertion, negative for chest pain, palpitations, dizziness, edema, abdominal pain, vomiting, and melena. chest pain, palpitations, dizziness, edema, abdominal pain, vomiting, and melena, weakness, paresisia or dysarthria, or forgetfulness or getting lost. In addition to Parkinson's disease, she has generalized anxiety disorder, GERD, and chronic urinary tract infections. She has essential hypertension, hyperlipidemia, impaired fasting glucose, gout, hypothyroidism, hearing loss, but she refuses to wear her hearing aids, and allergic rhinitis. The patient underwent an open cholecystectomy in 1967, this was pre-lapse, thyroidectomy in 1978, and TAH/BSO in 1985, all for benign conditions. She absolutely refuses mammograms, colon cancer screenings, and vaccinations due to fear of side effects. Her mother died at 71 from heart disease, father died at 90 from old age, brother died from prostate cancer, and one daughter, who is 54, has bipolar disorder. She is widowed and she is a retired high school teacher with a master's degree. She drinks one glass of wine per week, never smokes, or use recreational drugs. She moved in with her daughter 10 years ago when her husband died and does not drive due to anxiety. She eats whatever sounds good and gets no exercise other than going out to her appointments. She has no outside interests or hobbies. Sounds like her hobbies is her medical care. She has no known drug allergies or no known food allergies that have been confirmed. The medications that she is taking, levodaroxin for thyroid disorder, allopurinol for her gout, metoprolol. I didn't see any tachycardia, so she may have been prescribed that for hypertension, but that's not typically a first line for hypertension. The carbodopa levodopa is for her Parkinson's disease. Vitamin D, very frequent for someone to be supplemented with vitamin D weekly or daily depending on the dose. Polyethylene glycol, which will be used for constipation. Loratadine, that's Claritin, she's using that for her itchiness or allergies, rhinitis. Diazepam because she has anxiety. She has been using an expired prescription for triamcinolone on her vulva for itching for the last six months. That's not going to help. She continued to take conjugated estrogens prescribed by her urologist. And she has stopped all GERD medications because they gave her a headache. All right, so we got some polypharmacy and some comorbidities here. So let's look at her physical exam. Looks good, 98.1, 74, 14, 132 over 60, SpO2 is 98. She's 5'3", 198, which means she is overweight, but she has lost three pounds in five months. She's well-developed, well appearing, overnourished, older female, alert and oriented times three. All vital signs stable and no acute distress, ate an entire bag of trips, chips, and drank one can of a nutrition supplement during the interview, of note. She has a labile effect, pressured and tangential speech with a liguria, no change from the patient's baseline. This is related to her Parkinson's disease, and she has fair insight. Skin, hair, and nails are warm and dry, no rashes noted on full skin exam. Moist, sticky, intriginous areas present in inframammary, intergluteal, and inguinal regions. This is canidiasis. No abnormal findings with hair or nails. Clear toositation bilaterally with no adventitious sounds noted, regular rate and rhythm, no murmurs. Abdomen, we've got normoactive bowel sounds, soft, non-tender, non-distended. No masses, no organomegaly, no hernias. Her scars are present from her previous surgeries. No costovertebral angle tenderness is elicited, which would be important to assess on this patient because she's obviously got some UTI issues. We're trying to rule out pile nephritis by checking her CVA tenderness. Now it's just done by tapping on the back, just below where the rib cage ends. You can grab a picture so you can see that. Genital rectal, external genitalia, Bartholin glands, urethra, and Sken's glands fully obscured by talcum powder. Vaginal mucosa pink, but extremely dry and thin with no abnormal discharge noted, swab of the vaginal vault obtained for OB-GYN mount. Tender anal canal with multiple moderate-sized non-thrombosed, which is important, external and internal hemorrhoids, no fissures. That's good. So we've got none, none that are thrombosed and no fissures. Tan soft stool in the vault, keem negative. All right, so musculoskeletal, we've got good muscle tone, no clubbing or cyanosis, plus two pulses. Neurologic slow but steady gait without shuffling, no tremors or cogwheeling. So this is where we're kind of checking up on her Parkinson's disease. We do expect a slow gait. She's not shuffling. That's good. She's not very progressed. She doesn't have any central tremors or cogwheeling, which is when you pull on the arm, normally if you pull somebody's. So this is patient, this is provider. Normally when you pull on somebody's arm, it just goes down fluid when you resist it, right? Someone with Parkinson's will cogwheel. Five out of five strength, sensation intact, gross hearing decreased bilaterally. Remember she's supposed to wear hearing aids. MMSE is 27, so we're good there. So this confusion that she's having isn't affecting cognition, like cognition in a way that would be seen in spelling world backwards, remembering three words. She's mostly just, mostly just like fixated, you'd think. So what kind of differentials do you have for this patient? I'll pause for a second. Go ahead and get your thoughts together or type it in the chat as far as what you're thinking is going on with this patient. Here are some differentials that we're going to think of. We've got a lot going on with her, right? There is a lot of things going on. UTI because of the alter state in history. She's got chills. She does have, she has taken carbodopa levodopa, which can worsen urinary retention. She also has this drying and alteration of her urethral mucosal barrier because she's using talcum powder, topical steroids. She's got menopause, so we already usually have atrophy of the vaginal skin, thinning, no, no happy mucus anymore that keeps all that pH and things happy and normal down there and bulked tissue. So all of those could lead to this. That steroid use is not good. I know that it's expired, but still using a steroid does what to if you've got something fungal? Who knows what happens when you put a steroid on something fungal? It's also could be progression of dementia and PD. The hallmark sign of dementia of any cause is change in mental status. With the patient's PD being medically managed and evidenced by the absence of the neurological findings, right? No cogwheeling or shuffling and a normal MMSE, well, this is less likely to be a cause for her subacute confusion. Medication side effects are a possibility. Carbodopa levodopa and diazepam can cause confusion. If there's no organic cause identified by the workup, the possibility should be discussed with whoever prescribed those medications. Electrolyte abnormalities, hyponatremia can be found in older adults. She has got headaches and nausea that would support this diagnosis. The subacute intermittent nature of her confusion makes this diagnosis less likely to be an underlying cause. Pediatric deficiencies, for example, such as Wernicke's encephalopathy are unlikely as the patient has had minimal intake of alcohol. She's drinking a glass of wine per day. Her symptoms are subacute and intermittent. Again, normal MMSE, unlikely diagnosis. Psych, psych stuff. So emotional distress, anxiety, exacerbation, and mood disorder can all be considered. Highly emotional states can cause confusion and disorientation. She has longstanding generalized anxiety disorder, which is not well-controlled because she will not try medication or therapy. Her fear of sepsis fueled by compulsive internet surfing is her chief concern. Her labile effect with pressure tangential speech is congruent with her anxiety disorder and PD. However, this would be a diagnosis of exclusion as the cause of the confusion, again, ruling out everything else. Hypothyroidism may be associated with confusion or associated symptoms of worsening anxiety, weight loss, and fatigue would support this idea. If there's no recent normal TSH on her chart, this diagnosis should be excluded in the workup. So back to the, what happens if you put a steroid on a fungus? It feeds the fungus. The fungus will get worse. Of these, which is your most likely diagnosis for this patient? We are definitely going to consider this acute cystitis to be number one on our list. Absolutely exacerbated by her anxiety as far as how she's responding to this. How this could have already been treated and managed if she had been compliant or adhered to her medical plan. This patient's history and presentation suggests acute cystitis and UTI. A point-of-care urinalysis will be helpful in formulating the diagnosis and is recommended in post-menopausal women over empiric antibiotic therapy to overlap, to the overlap of symptoms with other vulval vaginal conditions. A lot of times we can just do empiric therapy in our younger patients, twenties, thirties. Most of the time it's E. coli, they're sexually active, some sort of, you know, like minor hygiene issue. It doesn't take much to accidentally get any E. coli UTI. So the younger patients, you just prescribe them macrobide and they're pretty much good to go. You can still do a dipstick just to confirm, but doing a culture and sensitivity is not necessary in your younger patients unless they're recurrent. Okay, once you start having any other, you know, added-on issues with the UTI situation, you start doing the culture and sensitivities. But just standard old, yeah, you have a positive purple on your dipstick, you know, your leukocytes popped up purple. Yeah, you've got a UTI. Let's go ahead and treat it. Doesn't get better in five days. Come back and see us. We'll, you know, check out a culture and sensitivity. But with this patient, she's got a lot of things going on. Chronic UTI patients, you absolutely have to get a culture and sensitivity too. They're more likely to be resistant to everything because, and grow something abnormal because the vulval vaginal changes that you see in post-menopausal patients, they're more likely to have caught something kind of odd rather than just E. coli. So culture and sensitivity is 100% necessary. Although the diagnosis of a UTI can typically be confirmed at the point of care, it is important not to assume the diagnosis is the underlying cause or is mutually exclusive of other possible causes which may cause the confusion. We may have overlapping diagnoses, right? There may be UTI as well as other things going on related to maybe the carbodopa levodopa, the Parkinson's disease, the anxiety, without additional signs and symptoms that would support an ascending or systemic infection. Other possible causes of confusion in older adults must not be overlooked. Confusion in the older adult can be a little tricky. You know, UTI is kind of number one on my list as far as things that cause like a subacute reason for new onset of confusion. I'm always going for the UTI, checking a UA, getting a culture and sensitivity, taking care of that and then revisiting it if we're still having problems. What kind of testing are we going to do? We're going to do the UA, culture and sensitivity. We're doing that wet mount for the vagina, for the vaginal infection, CBC, CMP, and a TSH. Maybe we're giving her too much levodaroxin, right? And we've shot her over into hypothyroidism. Okay. Let's look at her dipstick. So urine specific is 1.005, pH is 6.0. Color is yellow, appearance clear, white blood cells 30, positive for nitrites, positive leukocytes, few bacteria, negative for protein, blood glucose, ketones, bilirubin, epithelial cells. So what we expected. Urine culture confirmed the organism and sensitivity. Yeah, absolutely. That's a funky one. We got enterococcus, facialis, and we would not have been able to treat it with macrobide. Macrobide can treat almost everything except for five or six things. So enterococcus is, this one's, again, this is a funky one. You're going to have to use something like Cipro or Levo. I mean, you can use penicillin, tetracycline, or macamycin. I'd probably go with Cipro for this guy, get that knocked out. Vaginal wet mount confirmed the absence of an infection as well as a lack of normal lactobacilli consistent with low estrogen effect. So negative for yeast, clue cells, flagellites, negative whip test, pH 5.0. Good, okay? Normal CBC ruled out a systemic infection, which we can hopefully use to encourage her that you're not septic. But again, we kind of have to get the UTI cured so we can get the patient to present without the confusion that we can maybe have a better conversation. I'm really interested to see the narrative for this patient's visit because I'm sure there'll be a lot. Let's look at, we've got a normal chem panel. We've got a normal TSH. So what are our next steps in management? We're going to start her on Augmentin. Based on the review, prior urine culture sensitivity testing, and this was good. We'd already tried macrobide two months ago, right? So we did want to go ahead and start her on something before we get our culture and sensitivity back. Takes 36 to 48 hours to get your culture and sensitivity back on urine. You will start something immediately that they're not allergic to. You look at the last three months of antibiotics. Whatever they've already taken, you give something different. You, you, you pick a different category, get something else going on. So if they took macrobide, that lets you know it's something funky because macrobide will treat almost anything, okay? Except for the funky five or so. So going with the Augmentin will get us to cover a lot of things that occur in the UTIs that are the oddballs. So that's why we picked Augmentin. Again, you could also pick Cipro, just kind of provide our preference. She was referred to a psychotherapist for her anxiety and refused. She also refused to try any SSRI. I know that's an antidepressant and I'm not depressed. With shared decision-making and full discussion of all the risks and benefits, it was agreed she should take her diazepam every night at bedtime for now and avoid all alcohol. And a check of the state controlled substance database revealed no problem use. I hate anything that ends in pam, so I wouldn't have done that, but that's just my personal thing. I'm not a big Pam fan. So, because especially since that can contribute to confusion, it's really hard with this patient. I think it's funny that she'll take diazepam, which has like, if you Google diazepam, you're going to find terrible stuff about it, but she won't take a low-dose SSRI. Patients are tricky. They'll just get things in their head. You have to work with what you got. It's called patient-centered care where you kind of tailor it to their needs and what they're going to actually do without doing any harm. That's kind of the tricky balance. She was counseled and reassured that there was no evidence of sepsis, was re-referred to urology, and was convinced to schedule four weekly visits with her PCP at the practice to continue counseling for her uncontrolled anxiety. Recommendations were also used, were made to use the talcum powder in the skin folds, not in the vulval vaginal area. And she's also going to start vaginal estrogen cream, which is going to be one of the things I was hoping they were going to do because she does not need to be on oral estrogen therapy at this point. The benefit out, the, the risks outweigh the benefits for this patient. Topical is way, way better. You get no systemic side effects and you get bulking of the vaginal tissue, which will increase or decrease the amount of UTIs they're getting. Protect the area. I mean, if you have decreased tissue, you're just leaving everything wide open to catch anything. Happy bulky tissue with good mucus and good pH catches all this stuff and prevents it from ever getting into the urethra so that we don't get the UTI. So using this topical estrogen cream is way better for her. The patient was advised to use hemorrhoidal ointment up to four times a day for her hemorrhoids. That will definitely help with shrinking. Again, she had no thrombosed, no fissures. Using just over-the-counter hemorrhoid ointment will be the solution for her. Hopefully we can get those to calm down. Also, we want to assess if she's got any constipation. I'm not sure if they mentioned that already because she may need to use something that helps smooth her bowel movements while her hemorrhoids are healing. Okay. Which of these tabs I want to do? Think of, I kind of mentioned that, that I want to use. Always check for UTI if they're confused. Okay, so let's look at her outcome in general. So not as long as I expected it. Some, some of these providers who contributed to this book will write you like a whole page and others are just kind of brief. All right, the patient's daughter called the next day to report that the confusion was gone. Good. And many months later, it has not returned. This, along with normal blood tests, supports the acute anxiety exacerbation stemming from her fear of sepsis was the most likely cause of her confusion. The patient finished the full course of antibiotics, which she tolerated moderately well by taking food. Again, Augmentin does cause a lot of GI upset. You want to really counsel this patient to take things with food. I also always recommend a probiotic. I'm a big fan of, these just happen to be sitting here. I didn't actually plan this. I like cultural health and wellness quite a bit. It's got a high amount of lactobacillus rhamnosus. That's a good one. Really like that one. This one's got like 15 billion CFUs. It's really high. It doesn't have any inulin in it, which some people will respond negatively to. So it's a great one. This is the one I take. That's why it's right here. So I can just pick it up and talk about it. So doing that will be helpful. Our reassurance, along with the recommendation that she takes her diazepam every night instead of PRN, was effective in abating her acute anxiety. Unfortunately, the patient continues to try anything else for GAD. I'm allergic to everything and know it works for me. She remains on that nightly diazepam repeatedly educated about risks, including fall and cognitive changes. She has taken up online games and puzzles as a replacement for internet surfing. That is fantastic. Happy to see that she's replaced it with kind of a different habit. The patient is well-known to all members of our care team. Her multiple significant medical problems, including anxiety, fear of medication side effects, and spending significant time alone surfing the internet have led to a pattern of mistrust of medications and poor compliance with care plans. Failure to improve in emotional distress led to a dysfunctional pattern of repeated phone calls to the office for various symptoms, demanding treatment over the phone. As the patient would repeatedly refuse an office visit, empiric treatment was sometimes used, but generally failed, given the patient's emotional limitations. I was presently surprised when I successfully convinced her to schedule weekly check-in appointments, which provided the regular personal counseling and reassurance needed to minimize her internet-fueled fears and anxieties. She kept all scheduled appointments as now seen every two months for follow-up. She finally returned to her urologist and started a prophylactic medication. Methanamine and hipurate recommended 18 months prior. We could have avoided all this. Its primary side effect, looser stools, allowed her to discontinue her daily laxative. Good. And she has not had any recurrence of cystitis since. Her quality of life is significantly improved as, as has her daughters. Because if you, you're treating a whole family here when you're treating a single patient. And the frequent frantic phone call habit has resolved. What a wonderful outcome. Just keeping on trying, being persistent and keeping trying, keeping trying with this patient. I mean, you could get easily frustrated and short-tempered with a patient like this, but just continuing to approach that patient with a heart of love, realizing this is another human being who has genuine, real fears and concerns. You can just keep, you guys keep working. One day you might get that breakthrough that you needed. And look, she's really, she's going to have a better quality of life from here because of this provider. So that's amazing. All right. You know, I had to stop my share. Thank you so much for coming by. Love doing stuff like this. I'll go ahead. If you came in late, I have recorded this. I'm going to post it to the NP Guide Facebook page and it'll be there for future viewing. And again, if you want to grab the book that I was working out of, there it is. It is just fantastic. Love this book. The guy behind it is great too, so definitely love supporting him. It is just fantastic. Love this book. The guy behind it is great too, so definitely love supporting him. All right. I hopefully see you guys next time. I hope you have a wonderful weekend. Happy holidays, Merry Christmas, and see you next time. Bye.